Looks like he's losing weight. Looks like he's losing weight. He's great. Right. Some strength there. Now we'll do this push exercise. My son plays football too, yes. Yeah.
Does he have a girlfriend? If he had a girlfriend, maybe do it together. Ten walks.
Yeah, I guess so.
It is now 7:05. Let the record show that the Rialto Open Session has now begun. Tonight, ladies and gentlemen, we have a very busy meeting on our agenda, but we are happy to welcome Garcia Elementary School, 5th grade student Brittany Gonzalez to lead us in the pledge allegiance. Thank you, Brittany.
Good evening, everyone. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may sit down.
Thank you, Brittany. Did a nice job. Mr. Mohammed, do you have a report out of closed session?
Yes. The Board of Education denied the request for an extension of leave of absence for classified employee number 1392923. The roll call board is 5-0.
Thank you. Next, we have a very important duty that we do once a year. We have the reorganization of the board. That's where we sometimes change seats and sometimes we may stay in our same positions. So can we get a motion here to open the meeting?
So moved. Second.
Vice President Montez and a second by O'Kelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is opened at 7:09. 7:09. Okay, we first look at the election of the president of the Board of Education. Do we have a motion?
Ah, yes. I'd like to point out that Edgar Montez is our current vice president and therefore is the next in line for the presidency.
Yes.
Edgar has served three years. This is his fourth year. He has served well. He is extremely visible. He attends numerous district events, and Edgar definitely knows the heart of this community. The protocol is that every board member has the opportunity to serve as president. It's not really a privilege, it's just something that's done. The protocol is, is it just rotates each year. Never in the history of this board has a board member been denied the opportunity to be president. All school boards simply rotate the position each year. Rialto is no exception. And, you know, I'd like to point out that nobody really knows the job of president and what it entails until they do it. But once they are named to that position, they learn it and they do well, as the other three board members here have done. So I want to make sure that we don't allow personal biases to be a reason to deny Edgar, something that he has earned and worked hard for, and I nominate Edgar Montez for president.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we have 3-2. Motion fails. Do we have another motion for president?
I'd like to nominate Nancy O'Kelly. I think, honestly, I think everybody on this board, whoever it is, is going to be a good president. Most of the board members on here have already had the opportunity and did an awesome job. But I think Nancy would, I think Nancy would be a good board president because she knows the district in and out. Nancy retired as a 30-year employee of this district. She's been a teacher here, she's been an administrator here, and now she's serving as a board member. We want to, we really want to move forward, at least I think many people in this district and in this community want to move forward in many ways, and I think Nancy could help us accomplish that by bringing her experience as a longtime employee of this district and now as a board member. I think she is more than qualified, just as qualified as any of us up here to serve as president. So I'd like to ask that we support Nancy for the presidency.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Well, that all being said and done, I would like to nominate Joanne Gilbert. She is our veteran board member, and we are, we are entering a very difficult year ahead of us with a lot of challenges and a lot of things to overcome, and I think Joanne has the experience and knowledge to help us through that. So I nominate Joanne Gilbert.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that, and let me tell you why. You know, I truly believe that Joanne has the wisdom to move us forward, and really, like I said, I think, you know, anybody else here would do an awesome job, but for board president, Joanne has served as board president before, and what I liked about her was she was neutral and she was impartial, and I think, I think she definitely, definitely should be president. And I will second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we have a 3-2. Looks like we have a new president. Congratulations, Ms. Gilbert.
Thank you.
Next, we have...
I'm sorry, I believe, Ms., our new madam president...
Are we ready to move? You'll finish it out?
Madam President.
Thank you. We will continue with the reorganization, and I'll save my comments until when it's time. Next, we will have the election of vice president. We need a nomination for vice president. Can I get a motion?
I nominate Edgar Montez since he's currently in the position, and maybe another year in that position will help him head towards the presidency one day.
Could I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we will elect Edgar Montez for vice president. Could I get a... No, we haven't finished yet. We need... All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Could we get a motion for someone else for vice president?
I'd like to make a motion that we nominate Ms. O'Kelly for vice president.
Get a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, may vote by saying aye or no.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay. All right. Motion. Could I get another motion for vice president?
A motion that we accept Mr. Ayala as vice president.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor, please vote aye or no.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion is carried. Mr. Ayala will take the position as vice president. We move down to election of board clerk. May I have a motion for a board clerk?
Like to nominate Mr. Martinez.
Get a second.
I'll second it.
All right. Ready to vote for election of clerk? All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 No? Could I have three ayes?
Three.
Okay. And that clears the election of the officers. General consent items approved the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board Facilities Corporation held on December 7, 2012.
You have item four and five, please, on the regular agenda.
Oh, okay, I was going by this. Okay. Next, we move to voting representative to county committees, and that is a position where the person who's voted as a representative to the county committee will, that position is held in the county, San Bernardino County School Boards Association. And I elect Nancy O'Kelly to be voting representative to our county committee.
Second.
I think it's already a done deal, isn't it?
Yeah, but it still has to be in our minutes.
Oh, okay.
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote, motion is carried. And next, we will have election of alternate voting representative to county committee.
I'd like to recommend Joe Ayala.
Any others?
I second the motion.
Miss will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried by unanimous vote. So our committee, county committee representatives will be Nancy O'Kelly, and the alternative will be Joe Ayala. And that concludes the election of reorganization of the board. And now we move to... Yes, we do that after the board meeting. Thank you. So when this board meeting comes to a close, we will reconvene for the Board of Education to approve the minutes of the last meeting that was held for reorganization on December 7, 2012. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Now we will move to public comments. Comments from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any item that is not on the agenda will be granted three minutes to make a presentation. Mr. Islam, do we have names?
Yes. Yes. The first person, Linda Gonzalez.
Good evening, Board of Directors, Rialto School District and Community of the Rialto. First of all, let me introduce myself while you already introduced me. Linda Gonzalez, and I'm your newly elected official for West Valley Water District Board, and I'm here to represent the community at whole, and if you have any questions, my number is 951-213-9916. Feel free to call me anytime. Please, not after 10 o'clock at night, but besides that, feel free to call me. I'm here to serve you for the next four years. I've been a community organizer for 20 years, and I'm very happy to represent the city of Rialto, Bloomington, Colton, and parts of Fontana. Thank you. And removing my hat from director, now I'm going to talk as a mother and as an individual. My kids attended Colton Unified School District. All four graduated from Bloomington High School, class of 4, 6, 8, and 12. And I attended a lot of board meetings, and excuse me for being blunt, but sometimes I think when people are elected or people are given a name, we forget about the community in our heart. And I want to just remind the board members or the administrators, you know, it's the people. We represent la gente, the people. Every day when you come in here, in your mind and your heart, you represent la gente, the people. You know, let's leave our arrogance aside, let's leave our personal vendettas aside, our egos aside. Let's walk in here saying, "I'm going to represent the children, the body of the Rialto School District, and the parents and the affiliates, not me. I'm not here to represent me." Thank you.
Russell Silva.
Good evening, board members, administration, and viewing audience. My name is Russell Silva, and I'm a Rialto resident. Common Core is here, and Associate Superintendent Dr. Susan Levine couldn't have mentioned it any better when she, in the approved action item on November 13th, when she said, "These standards are designed to help the students achieve academic excellence and acquire critical thinking and other skills required to succeed in college in their careers. With the colleges raising their standards, these critical thinking and skills will enable those children to reach those new levels of standards. Common Core is going to bring its challenges, but I'm certain that the teachers and the students will step up and meet those challenges head-on. But what disturbed me most, Mr. Ayala, was in the October 23rd meeting when you made the comment, and I quote, "Common Core makes it difficult for our children to qualify for college. For the parents who don't understand this curriculum, comments such as those, especially from the school board president, they just intensify the distrust of the parents in this Common Core system. We need parental support, we don't need their opposition. And when you were president, you needed to stand up the most and shout the loudest in support of this curriculum. By doing comments such as this, you just polarize the parents, and it really shows your lack of confidence in the students and their ability to achieve. Never underestimate the power of an untapped mind of a child because it will surpass any imagination that you can have." In the November 13th meeting, this board approved the Common Core standards, and you voted for it as well. It also included $5 million of additional funding. With your negative comments against the Common Core, my only hope is that you voted for a new curriculum to help the students and not just for the $5 million. And Mr. Martinez, I questioned some of the actions you did in that same meeting when you questioned Ms. O'Kelly about the charges on the then Dr. Seaborn's credit card that was issued to him for the nicotine issues that he then gave away as gifts. Even the superintendent of schools refused to pay that bill because they questioned the validity of those charges. That in of itself should have been course for you to also question it, but instead, your comments tended to support his actions. One of the main purposes of this board... is to be fiducially responsible for the use and disposition of the funds allotted to them from the state and these taxpayers of this city. Apparently, giving gifts to public funds doesn't bother you. Well, you know, it bothers us.
Ron Fletcher.
Congratulations, Ms. Gilbert, and good evening, Board. What I have to say is going to be a little bit different from what everything else has been going on. I'd like to bring to the school board's attention a couple of things that I think would develop better relationships with the school district and its employee associations. One, I'd like it to be common practice to have an officer or representative, feel free to come up and for a couple of minutes, tell you what is bothering that association at that time. Therefore, we don't have to come in and fill out these cards by 6:45. We could come in a little bit later because we're all pretty busy. Two, last night I had a substitute meeting, and I had substitutes complain to me about a thing that happens in Rialto where they take a job for a high school and they get transferred to an elementary school, which means they have to leave the high school and drive to the elementary school. It amazed me because I can't imagine people going from high school to elementary because it's tougher to get high school substitutes than it is elementary. The third item I'd like to bring up is the fact that you guys should develop something like your Williams Report, where when people from the audience bring up something to you, you assign it to somebody to get an answer back to them. This way, you can keep on going and things will be finished instead of just lost on the side. Also, tonight, I know you're going to okay the extension of the contract with CWA, which I'm the Vice President of, and I appreciate that because the contract's not going to cost you anything, but you still will get your good substitutes. And one thing I'd like to say during that contract negotiations is, I was told that you guys are going to start thinking about educating substitutes and nothing more than what we just heard about the Common Core. I can't thank you enough for that because your substitutes teach 12% of the time. And for the last thing I'd like to say, this came from last night's meeting, most of the substitutes that work both in Rialto and in San Bernardino preferred to work for your district for two reasons. One, the administrators support them. And two, the children respect them. Thank you.
Mr. Islam, are there more?
Yes, two more. Next person, Edward Chisonis. I hope I'm saying right.
Okay, my name is Edward Chisonis. I'm a resident of Rialto. Reference to the Sun newspaper headlines on Sunday, on his Sunday, December 1st, 2013, read as "Audit Oaks Was Untouchable." As a resident and taxpayer of this community, the most concerning implications of this article referring to the audit that was commissioned by this district are the lack of proper monitoring or safeguards in place to prevent loss of over $1.8 million to this district. This implies a lack of leadership. Communications had failed, perhaps by a fearful reprisal or consequences, an indication of a failing system. The magnitude and length of this incident strongly implies the absence of understanding and a lack of asking the right questions. Ultimately, the school board is in the driver's seat. You are the leading edge of having the ultimate responsibility how this district operates. Back in March of this year, only two members, Nancy O'Kelly and Edgar Montez insisted on several times for an independent audit, which was met with opposition by the other three board members. Of what transpired to this day regarding the incident firmly indicates that Nancy O'Kelly and Montez, Edgar Montez, were absolutely right on insisting an independent audit for this district. I thank you, Nancy O'Kelly and Edgar Montez. Thank you both.
Nora Mendoza.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Nora Mendoza.
Good evening, my name is Nora Mendoza.
Algo que no me queda claro como padre de cuatro estudiantes en su distrito y una graduada, que siguen defendiendo ustedes a un personaje que nosotros los padres para nada lo queremos como líder en nuestra comunidad, en nuestro distrito. Nuestro periódico, El Sol, ha confirmado la relación de estas dos personas. Eso es algo claro que todo se facilitó en el robo a nuestros estudiantes. Fue por años. El robo a nuestros estudiantes fue por años. Señora Ayala, señor Martinez, muchas veces ustedes han repetido cuánto les importan nuestros estudiantes. Sus palabras no concuerdan con sus acciones. Estas sillas deben de ser llenadas por seres humanos que velen por los derechos de los estudiantes, no por máquinas frías que solo los dólares les importan. Se han olvidado de la esencia de ser humano y de vivir para servir y de dejar sembrado en nuestros estudiantes la importancia del estudio mientras estas sillas estén llenadas. Mientras estas sillas estén llenas solamente por máquinas, nuestros estudiantes son los que salen perdiendo. Nosotros necesitamos un verdadero líder en esas sillas. Díganme ustedes si en realidad les interesa a nuestros estudiantes. ¿En realidad les interesan? Gracias.
Something that isn't clear to me as a parent of four students in your district is that you continue to defend a person who we as parents don't want as a leader in this district. Our newspaper, The Sun, confirmed the relationship between these two persons. That is something that is clear. And it is clear that this was facilitated in the theft to our students. And this happened for many years. Mr. Ayala and Mr. Martinez, many times you have repeated many, how important our students are to you. But your words don't go hand in hand with your actions. Those chairs should be filled by human beings, people who care about the rights of our students, not by machine, cold machines that only think of the dollars and who's only interested in the dollars. You have forgotten the essence of being a human being and to live, to serve, and to plant a seed in our children and our students, and the importance of studies. While you sit in those, while these chairs should are being filled by cold machines, those who lose are our students because they don't have true leaders. Tell me, do you in fact care about our students?
Is that it?
That's all.
Alright, next, we will have comments on agenda items. Do we have any?
None.
Hearing none, then we will move on to presentations. Our first presentation will be given by Board Member Nancy O'Kelly, and this will be a certificate of recognition to Veronica Smith Izard and Lance Atkinson. Are they here?
Yes.
Please come forward. Is Mrs. Izard...
Let's start with Lance. And, hey, come on in. How are you doing? Good to see you again. Okay, many times, not just in our district, but in many business entities, employees are asked to do a job, and when the job is successfully completed, we move on. But in some instances, we must take the time for those employees who have gone above and beyond. At the last board member, I requested to honor two employees who wrote and secured grants that benefited our students in the district. These two employees never sought nor asked for recognition. They just took initiative and succeeded. After I read a little bit about what they brought back to the district, I'm sure you will agree with me that they are deserving of recognition tonight. Over the summer, Mr. Lance Atkinson, who is an earth science and physics teacher at Eisenhower High School, worked diligently for two months to secure the Toshiba grant. The grant's purpose was to increase positive attitudes towards science and STEM career considerations for minorities and low socioeconomic students, as well as to improve English language learner classification status through increased scientific literacy scores. Last month, Mr. Atkinson's grant was approved for Eisenhower High School for $12,499. "I actually wrote two grants. The Toshiba grant was the one which was awarded to us," replied Mr. Atkinson. "It's a great feeling when we have funds to help move the curriculum forward. I enjoy writing grants that help our students and teachers succeed." The learning objective which benefits students through the use of this grant includes students having an increased positive attitude towards STEM subjects, English language learners having increased reading, writing, and scientific literacy scores on test, students demonstrating the ability to perform the scientific procedure to solve problems and to be able to collect and analyze data from a variety of sources, students applying concept development to new ideas or projects, students evaluating formulas and performing calculations to predict outcomes, and students performing at a higher level of cognition, which will lead to greater retention on the Common Core test. Mr. Atkinson, who has been a teacher in our USD since 2010, spent the majority of his summer working on the two grants. He has demonstrated that his focus is on student academic achievement. This type of dedication deserves an official recognition and thank you. So let's give a big thank you to Mr. Lance Atkinson. His certificate says, "Certificate of Recognition for Excellence in Grant Writing." And I need a trip to Hawaii, so if you could write a grant for that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
As a correction, actually, I got both grants.
Oh, what was the other one for?
That was through the union. Through the union, that was a $3,000 grant for my earth science kids to build, produce, and display a space exploration project.
Oh, wow, cool.
And in 2010, guess who hired me?
Okay. And next, Veronica Smith Izard, come on down. Oh, wow, Mrs. Smith Izard is currently a coordinator of the Special Education Department. She began her career in the district in 1990 as a teacher at Henry Elementary School. She then became a program specialist, followed by a dean of students. We actually competed for the same job, and she got it, but I got mine two months later, so that's okay. Moved on from that to Assistant Principal at Frisbee Middle School, Assistant Principal at Eisenhower, where our paths crossed again because we worked together as assistant principals at Eisenhower. And finally, Principal of Carter High School. Then, moving on from there, she took a position as a leader in the Special Education Department at the district level. In 2009, Mrs. Izard was the lead writer for a grant that brought in $3 million for our culinary arts and engineering and design programs. While serving as a principal on special assignment with alternative education, career technical education, and special education programs, Mrs. Izard was invited to a CTE committee in 2009. At the time, the committee was discussing applying for two career technical education facilities grants in the areas of culinary arts and engineering that had a September deadline. After the second meeting, Mrs. Izard noticed that many progressive concepts were being discussed, but nothing was being written down. So she asked if she could start writing. She was then given the green light from then-Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education Gail Matthews. So from that moment, she became engaged and fully immersed. Fortunately, with my new position then, I had the gift of time to focus on the writing and creative aspects of the projects. By the later part of August, the Culinary Arts Grant was ceremoniously submitted to the state, and then Mrs. Izard started writing the Engineering Grant. The two CTE facilities grants resulted in more than $3 million being awarded to the district by the California Department of Education by the spring of 2010. The Engineering Grant was also recognized at a national conference the next year. As many of you know, after the Culinary Arts and Engineering Programs open next school year, it will be the Rialto kids who truly benefit from these grants. And we have some phenomenal facilities there, so we can't wait till they get filled up with students. When employees initiate and find creative ways to help their workforce without seeking any additional perks or commissions, we must find time to thank those who utilize their skills to find ways to bring funding back to our schools. Regardless of the final amount of the grant, the thought, hard work, and skill should always be rewarded. Thank you, Mrs. Izard, for your continued contribution to the district and for bringing us $3 million for our academies. Excellence in grant writing also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Kelly, for those presentations. And next, we will have Member Joseph Ayala present a key to the district.
As you know, one of the most challenging, but also rewarding, part of our lives is that of being a parent. The hours are long, but the award which comes back to us is when our children succeed. And although it is necessary to work for our own children, we have many giving parents, leaders in the district, who believe that there's no such word as "just my children" because they are selfishly working for everyone else's children as well. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to call up to the podium my selection for the key to the district, Elizabeth Moreno. Mrs. Moreno. Mrs. Moreno was born to serve. And after more than 20 years of giving back to the students and staff at the Rialto Unified School District, she is the person who earns this key to the district tonight. Ms. Moreno was born in Sonora, Mexico, moving to America at the age of 16. She joins six siblings who are all in the U.S. When she first migrated to the U.S., Mrs. Moreno lived in Huntington Park, where she met her husband, Fidel Moreno. Fidel, are you here? He's working. The couple married in 1978 and just celebrated their 35th anniversary. That's another one. In 1994, the Merinos moved to raise a family in the city of Rialto. The couple have five children. Uh, sons Johnny and Jimmy, and a daughter Jenny, who all graduated from Rialto High School. A son, Jerry, who is in the 10th grade at Rialto High School, and Christopher, who attends Garcia Elementary School. "We are one big happy family," smiled Mrs. Moreno. "We do everything together, so it works out for my husband and me." Mrs. Moreno recalled the first time she started to volunteer at a school site. "I was always trying to find ways to help." So in 1996, the late teacher and coach, Mr. David Japs, asked if I could be on the team, mom, for Rialto High School's track and field. She replied, "I said yes." As a team mom, I learned a lot. Mr. Japs also, a great person to work, he was a great person to work with. Enjoying the experience, the following years, she began asking parents to help. "I love to help people," Mrs. Moreno said. "I don't like to be the center of everything." I think George Washington said that, too. You know what happened to him. "But when the parents asked me to lead, I did. Many of our parents worked, so I understand that I have time to give back. So I did. In the end, it's for our kids." Impressively, at one time or another, Mrs. Moreno has served as a PTA, PTO president, vice president, secretary, and other various positions in Rialto High School, J. Hugh Middle School, Garcia Elementary School. I don't look at these titles of people. When you look at, at that too much, you're in trouble. I agree with you. You just have to look at, at the way it is. I am helping kids, the staff and the schools, and then, of course, you are okay. In 2011, at J. Hugh Middle School, under former principal, Mr. Daniel Sosa, Mrs. Moreno was awarded the Volunteer of the Year Award. J. Hugh Principal, Mr. Armando Urteaga added, "Elizabeth Moreno is dedicated and a caring parent who volunteers countless hours in our schools. She's a valued piece of our PTSA, and I am thankful for all the time and hard work she gives to the students and staff of J. Hugh Middle School. She is truly deserving of this recognition." Mrs. Moreno will also be recognized at the next Rialto Unified School District Board meeting for completing the Safety Volunteer Program. She's a graduate of the Rialto Unified School District Parent University, and also one of the first members. She will also complete her term as President of the District English Language Advisory Committee. It's called DLEC. Mr. Moreno today credits a person who changed the relationship of the way parents and districts work. "I will always remember Mr. Curtis Winton," replied. Although he's no longer with us, I remember his words of encouragement. He was a strong voice for our parents, always telling us that these are our kids, and we need to work with our schools, not against them. I'll always thank Mr. Winton for helping many of us in opening doors of communication with the schools, the district, and the board. Tonight, the Rialto Unified School District thanks you, Mrs. Elizabeth Moreno. For over two decades, your commitment in serving as a parent volunteer, leader at the elementary, middle, and high school levels has earned you the respect and love from many. It is widely known from various employees and fellow parents whom I spoke to, that you are one of the strongest kindness and personable parent leaders. The district students, the staff are fortunate to have known, and to this day, work with you. Thank you so much, and here's your plaque.
Good evening, board members. Good evening, everybody. It is an honor, an honor to receive this award on behalf of all the parent volunteers. I want to thank my family for their support. I would like to give a special mention to my parent volunteers for all the time they spent working with me in many district events. Sylvia Muñoz, Elsa de la Rosa, Isabel Romano, Juana Ramírez, Rebecca González, Maricela Arévalo, Alma Martínez, Grace Aguayo, Rafael Chavarría, Jacqueline Urbietta, Patricia Aguilera, Rosita Fuentes, Lina Rosa, Beatriz Vallesteros, Josefina Medina, Víctor López, and Tere Yamas. Thank you for always, always being there. We have made a difference. Please forgive me if I forgot to mention anyone. I would like to thank Mr. Winton for his support and for educating us in becoming better parents and volunteers. We miss you, Mr. Winton. I would also like to thank Mrs. Jasmine Valenzuela for receiving us with open arms, making us feel welcome all the time, and for her unconditional support. If every parent will invest one hour of their time in volunteering, I can already imagine the difference we will make. Thank you.
So either, are, Ms. Moreno, are any of your children here tonight? Okay, let's see your children, please stand.
Please stand and be recognized. This is a proud moment.
They said no, okay. Thank you, thank you so much. And next, I will present my key to the district. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, it is my honor to give the key to our district to someone who's been in public education for over 20 years, including teaching and administration. My key has been earned by Dr. Hillary Dyson. Please come down. I'll give you a little background on Dr. Dyson. She was born and raised in the city of Altadena, where she still resides with her husband and three children. She graduated from John Marshall Fundamental High School in Pasadena and went on to earn her bachelor's degree in Child Development at Cal State Los Angeles. She also completed her master's degree in Educational Leadership from Point Loma Nazarene University. My granddaughter graduated from there. In 2008, she earned her Doctorate of Education and Urban Leadership from USC. Her work experience began in the middle 1990s as a classroom teacher, and then program specialist in the Pasadena Unified School District. Then she went on to be principal in early education at Los Angeles Unified. She joined the Rialto Unified School District as an administrator of child development in 2010. Dr. Dyson has been married to James Green, her husband, I see him right there smiling, for 23 years. They have three daughters, Courtney, Kylie, and Cameron. Courtney and Kylie are in college, and Cameron is in elementary school. Is that correct?
Actually, middle school.
Middle school, all right, all right. Dr. Dyson supervises and coordinates up to 18 state preschools and four First Five San Bernardino full-day preschool programs involving 990 preschool children in the school program. And 116 certificated and classified staff. So you're busy, aren't you? Right. Among her responsibilities are budget, personnel evaluations, staff development, and parental outreach. One thing the general, general public does not know that during this, during the transitional period when regulation changes in preschool was being implemented, and before the Director of Child Development was hired by the district, Dr. Dyson was instrumental in enrollment and working as a true team leader with limited staff. And this is from our immediately, immediately retired, um, Child Development Director. I don't think Lynn is here, is she? She's not here, but this is a quote from her. "I met Hillary when I came to supervise her last summer as an interim director," said former Child Development Director Lynn Bruner. "I immediately realized that Hillary was amazingly effective, knowledgeable, and inviting. With a shortage of staff, so many changes, and First Five coming into the district, I was, it was, I was very fortunate that she was partnering with me and helping me play catch-up. There were so many times she could have said, 'This is not my scope of my job or what I do. I have to, do I really have to do this?'" "But she did not," added Lynn Bruner. "When I first started in the summer, we had 309 students enrolled, but within six weeks, we had over 600 students. And Dr. Dyson was the key factor of that. She single-handedly brought the success for First Five at Rialto. She's passionate about her job, never once complaining. I feel she is just a professional and personable leader. As your board member, I hold child development very dear to my heart, because that's where I spent the majority of my public education career. This is why I had to do some work on my own to really find out something about Dr. Dyson. These are some of the things she has brought to our district in a very short period of time. She has expanded preschool services to include three full preschool, full-day preschool classrooms, which increased full-day preschool student enrollment by 50%. She successfully obtained California State license for three preschool classrooms at Kodiak Elementary, providing an additional 54 spaces for students. She organized and coordinated 13 math grants at 18 school sites, providing 864 preschool students quality early math instruction and learning. She successfully manages a $3.9 million budget for state preschool with the contract from First Five. She has developed and maintained successful partnerships with principals, community agencies, organizations, San Bernardino First Five, West Ed, and Riverside Community and Care Licensing. Dr. Dyson has written a literacy grant to purchase new books for 804 students and their families. In her spare time, she's a Girl Scout leader, an active member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, National Congress of Black Women, and the National Child Development Institute. She's also secretary for Altadena's NAACP and an active member in her faithful Central Bible Church. And this is a quote from her. Maybe I'll let you read it. Would you like to read it? All right, come on, tell me what you feel.
"When I was told by Mrs. Gilbert that I was receiving the key to the district, I was very surprised," smiled Dr. Dyson. "I thank the dedicated employees who work alongside me each day. It is so important for us to help parents to enroll their children in preschool so that they are better prepared for education at an early age. I am truly blessed and humbled by this honor, and will always treasure this moment."
Thank you. I thought it would be better if she spoke in her own words how she really feels. And it's, as you said, it's always so thankful to recognize those people that help you get there, because we know that in the District of Rialto, we don't ever get any place without the support and help of those around us to help us do our jobs. I feel that Dr. Dyson, in her short time at the Rialto Unified School District, has demonstrated that this is not, it is not how many years you serve, but rather how effectively you utilize those years of service. And this is why I congratulate you, and I want to present to you my key to the district, Dr. Hillary Dyson. And I see some smiling people. Mr. Smith is green, green, please stand. This is Dr. Dyson's husband. Come up and take a picture with your wife. And then I see some flowers from somebody that I know appreciates. Oh, her daughter, oh, come on up, family. This is family time, please come. Where's the daughter? Come on, come on down. Wonderful, everyone is here. All right, and you have a presentation. Come on, bring her her flowers. Are you from the preschool department? Child development.
One of our teachers.
All right.
Thank you, Mrs. Gilbert. I'm deeply honored to stand here today and receive the key from you. This is extra special, because not only have you worked within child development within your career, you have been a huge supporter-
So with that, which by the way, I left on the table, so give me a second. With that, I want to thank you. Thank you for sharing your life's experiences and giving back selflessly to our students who greatly benefit from strong mentors such as yourself and such as Master Jesse Dancel. So, thank you very much. With that, I present you a certificate of recognition on behalf of the Board of Education, Grand Master. And Officer Patrick McNay. Thank you both. Thank you Principal Nava, Mr. Nava. Thank you, Coach Carlos. I want to thank all of you guys. Thank you for everything that you do. And students, stay with it. I can't do splits or kick up here, but maybe you guys can or will someday, so stick with it and continue to learn from these people because they wouldn't be doing it if they didn't care. So, thank you again. Thank you, everybody. Can we get over there since it's a big crowd? All right, we could all go over there in front.
As they exit the room, let's give all of our recipients another hand because they were all worthy. All the recipients who were recognized tonight, we want to just say thank you for your service to our school district. Now, at this time, we will have from the Department of Education Federal Program Monitoring Notification and Findings, Mrs. Robin McIver Brown will give us a presentation, so we need to move aside, I think.
Good evening to the Board of Education. With all the wonderful presentations we've just had, I'm going to be very brief, so bear with me. For everyone else, I'm the Senior Director of Categorical Programs. My name is Robin McIver Brown. And I'd like to just briefly tell you what is federal program monitoring. Federal program monitoring is an overall determination of whether the local education agency, which is our district, is meeting statutory program and fiscal requirements for categorical programs. There is a cycle scheduled by school year for every district in the state of California. An LEA may be selected for an onsite or online monitoring every two years. LEAs are assigned to one of four cycles, A, B, C, or D. Rialto Unified School District is in Cycle D. This process of being monitored every other year or every two years began in 09-10, and we had an onsite review. And then in 11-12, we had an online review. And as you can see, in 2012-13, there was no follow-up needed from our 11-12 online review. And in the year 13-14, which we are currently in, we had an onsite visit, and 60 cohorts or LEAs in Cohort D were selected to be visited. The California Department of Education also has a schedule outlined for the year 14-15, and I don't believe we'll have any further follow-up needed from this year. And then in 15-16, we will have an online review. Many of you might want to know how LEAs are selected because there were 60 selected in our Cohort D. There are just several factors, and I won't go into detail, but first is a history of compliance. Rialto Unified has a strong history of compliance. Academic achievement is the next. They look at districts that have an API of 800 or less, or any subgroups from the district level that are less than 800, and whether or not your school district is in program improvement. We have a lot of programs that we receive funding from, so we have a large program size. And we received funds for various areas, Title I, Title II, Title III, EIA, Economic Impact Aid, LEP, and Career Technical Education. Fiscal analysis, they look at the total amount of funds that we receive from all of these programs, and we're considered a large district, so we have a large amount of funds that come in. And then the next is just left up to sheer randomness. So, for this year, 13-14, we were selected for review based on, and they came to review our programs from 12-13. And these are the areas that were selected. Career Technical Education, Compensatory Education is the same as Title I. Education Equity, English Learners, Fiscal Monitoring, Improving Teacher Quality, and Uniform Complaint Procedures. Seven areas for review. There were several sites that were randomly selected for review as well. We have an elementary school, Bemis Elementary, and they were reviewed in Title I, which is Compensatory Education, EL, and UCP, Uniform Complaint Procedures. Colb and J. Hugh Middle Schools were selected to be reviewed in CE, EL, and UCP. And then we had Carter and Eisenhower High Schools and Rialto High School. The next slide just gives you a brief snapshot of all of the areas that were reviewed, once again. Compensatory Education, there were 33 items in that area for review. We uploaded 258 documents. That doesn't count pages, that's documents. And we had a findings, we had one in that area. Career Technical Education, there were 10 items for review, 145 documents, zero findings. Education Equity, you can read that, seven items reviewed, 175 documents, zero findings. EL, 21 items reviewed, 259 documents, five findings. And Fiscal Monitoring, six items reviewed, 131 documents, zero findings. Improving Teacher Quality, six items reviewed, 78 documents, zero findings. And Uniform Complaint Procedure, six areas of review, 51 documents uploaded, zero findings. So, out of our seven areas reviewed, we had two areas that have finding and five areas with zero findings, and the district and staff should be commended for this. The next slide is just a summary, once again, of the number of areas reviewed, seven, the total number of items reviewed, 89, the total number of documents we uploaded during this one-week review period, and the total number of findings. So, once again, that is pretty commendable. No district is perfect, so we always have room to grow. So, I want to go into the findings that we did have and how we're going to resolve them. The first area finding we have in Compensatory Education or Title I, and it deals with the school site council approving school plans. They did review the 12-13 school plans for every school that is listed, Bemis, J. Hugh, and Colb, but they also would like to see the 13-14 school plan, so we will upload those with the final budget allocations, which have not yet come out from the state. And so, that is why we have a deadline of March 15th to just upload this year's documents. Last year's documents were uploaded. In the area of English Learners, the finding for one school site was for ELAC, and to resolve it, we have to upload ELAC minutes and agendas, and that area will be resolved. And the extensions are late, March 15th, and we can always upload and clear this finding before that deadline, and we will. The finding for EL6 deals with school site council, and this is pretty, an easy one to clear because it coincides with the finding from Title I or Compensatory Education 08. So, when we resolve and upload the school plans for 13-14, it will clear this finding for EL06, Single Plan for Student Achievement, by March 15th. Once again, the finding for EL11 will also be cleared when we upload the school plans because this one deals with the budget plages, how we distribute the funds, and the final allocations will be given to schools, and we will upload that information, and it is embedded in the school plans as well. So, we have three findings that will be cleared when we upload just the school plans. Then area finding number EL14 and EL21, the district and the English Learner Department is coordinating a committee to work on these two areas. The key to this resolution is submitting a systematic procedure that must be developed to monitor reclassified students. This is very key because the state is not looking at different plans for every school in terms of how they monitor their reclassified students, but they're really honing in on a systematic plan for the entire district. So, each school has their own plans, but they were looking for us to develop a district-wide plan, and which we understand this, and we will work towards developing a committee to meet this standard. So, in the past, we've always met this standard, but they're looking for a system, district-wide, and not individual school sites. And also, the finding for EL21, Access to the Core, this deals with, once again, a system of procedure district-wide to monitor current EL students, CELT levels 1 through 5. And that is a plan and a committee that the English Learner Department is working on to, once again, develop a systematic district-wide, not something that is individual from site to site, so we can have a better grasp on tracking our students that are EL learners. And with that in mind, any questions?
I have a question. On the reclassification of students, I understand that we have to submit evidence that we have developed a plan to monitor that's cohesive to the entire district. So, will you have a committee? How will you meet this challenge?
The EL department, right now, they have currently had one meeting, and they asked for input from teachers, administrators, district office personnel, and they are going to look for parents to be a part of this committee as well. It's in its developing stages, so the first initial meeting was somewhat of a planning meeting to develop a focus and to just inform the committee of what the purpose is, what the state would like us to develop. And then they are planning a follow-up meeting and subsequent meetings this coming January so they can meet this deadline. So, yes, they are developing a committee so that we can have buy-in and input as we work towards developing this system-wide program.
Does the state provide a template for you to go by?
The good thing is that we are the authors of what we want to do district-wide, so we don't have to follow what someone else is doing. We are in charge of making our own plan of action.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. Thank you for notifying the board. Thank you for bringing us up to date. It's a good action plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. Next, we will move to public hearing. There's none on the agenda. Public information. The Williams Settlement Legislation Quarterly Uniform Complaint Summary, July through September 2013, is in reference D1.1, if you want to refer to that. And number two, Williams Inspection Report F for the Fiscal Year 2013-2014, is in reference Moving on to Consent Calendar Items. All items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by board members of the, or the acting superintendent for individual action. We need a motion to approve consent items E through J.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. May I have a second?
We have a second.
It has been moved in second that we will approve consent items. Now, we're ready, are there any, does any board member need to pull, would like to pull one or make a comment?
I have a poll on G10. I just have a question.
G10?
Uh huh.
Okay. You may go ahead.
Just briefly, I see that we are approving the MCF Consulting contract for $110,000 for the MAH billing services, but we're also approving San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools $20,000. Can somebody clarify for me why we're paying two different entities or what we're paying them for?
Dr. Levine.
Yes, I'd like to ask Mr. John Roach to come on up and explain that. It's under his purview in special projects.
Hi, good evening, members of the board, Madam President. Mr. Islam, could you repeat the question? I was walking from the other room and didn't hear the entire question.
Well, we're paying MCF Consulting $110,000 for the MAH billing services, but then we're also paying $20,000 to the San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools for MAH. So, I don't know why we're paying two different entities.
It's actually required as part of the program to pay MCF, well, I should say, part of it's required, to pay actually the county, which is the LEC. That's the second one that you see that's not to exceed $20,000.
Right.
They're the oversight committee at the county level for operating the MAH program. MCF Consulting is our consultant that's assisting us with operating the MAH program as a district.
Okay, so another question. So, we're putting out $130,000. What are we getting back?
We actually aren't putting out $130,000 because it's a commission-based type program. So, we don't make any money, then we don't pay them any money. So, and I'd like to give you an accurate figure on what we will potentially make, but unfortunately, the state has made changes to the program just in November, and not only is it applying for current, but it's actually going retroactive, so we don't have accurate figures as to what the income will be on the program, but it is still capped at a percentage of what we incur in the program. So, we don't pay more than 8% of what we make to the company, MCF Consulting.
Oh, okay.
But there's actually no upfront cost, no cost to the general budget. It's simply based on what we earn through the MAH program.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions on E through J?
H2, I had, well, I just had a comment again because I'm still kind of wondering about this contract. Yeah, H2 listed contracts, and the contract is, again, the SINK solution, and this is Dr. Levine. Although we are, the contract's being extended to December 31st, I'm still, the last, at a recent board meeting, you stated we really weren't going to start using the program until June, but we paid for a full year, so why can't we have the contract extended until the following June to give us that full year that we paid $120,000 for?
In the scope of this year, we're going to be using the SINK solution to build our scope and sequence, but as far as the teachers, it won't be done, so this is our building year. So, starting in January, we'll begin our meetings with the core teams. We have a schedule that we can send to the board, so you can see when we'll be doing that work, and so they've extended it for us. We'll still be using it next year, but next year is when it'll be implemented. So, we're building now, and, for example, we had to wait on the mathematics because of the books. You know, the books are, we're going to pilot them and we'll choose one, so we won't be actually building the math scope and sequence until May. So, we did get an extension from the company because we didn't get it started right away, and that's where we are. That's why it was extended from 6:30 to 12:31.
Then who's using it right now? Or who's going to be using it in January?
It'll be in the building stages. So, the core team that's doing the building, the teachers on the core team.
Okay, and they will be utilizing the program that we purchased?
Oh, yes.
Okay, that was my concern.
Yes, and we've been, Jen Harper has been working with the company to set up all the particular elements of technology that have to be done because, well, every teacher's name has to be put in there that's working as a builder so they can all work on their various parts.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions on E through J? Ready to vote? We have a preferential vote by our student board member, but it's not listed in our minutes. Micah, are you ready to vote?
Yes.
Yes? Board members, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Next, we will go to discussion action items, item K, item K1 through K5. Action items will be enacted in one motion unless members of the Board of Education request specific items to be discussed. Are there any items wished to be discussed? Hearing none, could I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve action items K1 through 5. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried unanimously. And now, we will come down to item L. Comments from the acting superintendent, Mr. Islam.
Thank you, Mrs. Gilbert. Tomorrow night, Carter High School going to present a Cezzy Holiday Concert, which is starting at 7:00 PM. You're all invited. The admissions is $5. Please support our students and our school. This is a great event for the long holiday. I also like to wish everyone in Rialto community and family and board members and staff, wish you the blessed and happy holiday. Enjoy this season, this is a great, we're all blessed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Islam. Now, we'll hear from members of the board, starting with our student board member, Micah.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say happy holidays. Hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving. As the year comes to the end, I just want to thank all of you that are here with us today and all those that are supporting us through broadcasting. Just a thank you, my deepest gratitude to you guys each and every day, I mean, each and every meeting coming here and supporting us as we go about our days, to continue to support your students in the district. Just thank you, guys. I also want to give my gratitude, and on behalf of all the students, just my thanks to all those that are recognized, honorably recognized tonight. Just thank you for your works in our district and in all that you do for us, our students. I just want to just thank you. I want to thank Ms. Joffrey for canceling the DSAG, the DSAG meeting for today. You know, we have finals this week. Just thank you for taking that into consideration as you went about the DSAG meeting. I just want to also thank my mom. Thank her for coming here, spending her long nights here at the district office. Just thank you, Mom. And just want to wish everybody a happy holidays. Have a blessed Christmas and safe New Years to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Micah. Thank you. Board Member Nancy O'Kelly?
Yes, I have a couple of things I'd like to say. First of all, I'm very glad I get to keep sitting next to Micah. I want to congratulate Mrs. Gilbert on her presidency. She has given us many years of outstanding service. She is a veteran board member, and I know she'll do a wonderful job for us again.
Thank you.
However, I have to say that I am very disappointed that the board majority did not vote for Mr. Montes for board president. To me, that, I just feel this shows extreme disrespect to a fellow board member who is very deserving of this position, and I know he would have done a great job, too. I would also like to thank, I've done, started my school visitations, I finally gave up on my broken toe healing, so now I just hobble around with it, but I have visited Curtis and Boyd and Dahlahan and Casey, and I would like to thank the principals, Vince Rollins, Marina Madrid, Dan Husbands, and George Bennett, and their staffs for a wonderful, warm reception at every school wherever I went. I really appreciated that, and I will be out to see the rest of you. That's my goal every year, to get to every school. I also attended the CSBA conference in San Diego, which is always exciting, and you just, you honestly just wish you could clone yourself to be in like 15 sessions at once because they offer a lot of really good things, but I enjoyed that. And finally, I want to wish everybody a very, very Merry Christmas and a wonderful 2014 next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Montes.
Thank you, President, Mrs. Gilbert. Well, good evening, everybody. Buenas noches. I just would like to also wish everyone here at the district and in our community a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year. Feliz Navidad y Feliz Año Nuevo to everyone. A todos. I just want to also congratulate all of the awardees today for all of their hard work, and every single person deserves their recognition. Again, I can't thank Officer McNay and Coach Carlos and Mr. James Nava and everybody else over at KC Elementary and some of the other places that they really coach our students and kids in the community. A lot of these kids, you know, can't afford to go to the Taekwondo dojo down the street where they charge a lot, and these guys sacrifice their time for free. And then also, oh, by the way, having the Grand Master here was awesome, awesome. Again, I do want to congratulate Mrs. Joanne Gilbert on another year as board president. I truly, truly believe that she will do well, as she has in the past, and who better than to lead us at a time like this where we're considering so much that needs to be done and at a time where we're going through a lot of difficulties. I know her wisdom and her guidance will go a long way in leading us in the right direction, and I want to ask, I want to thank all the parents that came here tonight and students who came to support me tonight. I want to thank you for being here. It means a lot to me. I snuck a couple pictures in there because this is something that I'll remember forever. So, thank you, gracias, thank you. And I do, and I do want to ask you, and I do want to ask you to please also lend your support to Mrs. Gilbert. support to Mrs. Gilbert as she serves her presidency for the next year and this whole board, because I truly believe that we, as a board, really do want to do what's best for our kids and for this district. We might all not always agree on how to go about it, but I truly believe that we will get there, we will get there soon. So please, thank you, and please do lend your support to the entire board. I did want to just reiterate something that Mr. Fletcher had said regarding the speaker cards. I truly agree that, you know, we have a pretty strict policy here that perhaps we can start to consider changing sooner or later. Our city here, officials, our local city government does not have such a strict policy. And some of our local school districts and city governments also do not have such a strict policy at most of them. Anyone can turn in a speaker card during public speaking as long as we're still on that topic, and perhaps maybe we can look at ways to also doing, following in their lead. I want to say this because my boys wanted to make sure that I brought this up to the board. They said, hey, Dad, you forgot, you forgot to mention regarding the Halloween. My kids are students here at this district, and they feel really bad that they're not allowed to wear, they're not allowed to wear costumes during Halloween, and I think that a lot of other districts do. I know, I know the district I went to as a kid allowed us to dress up for Halloween. And I understand the safety concerns and everything, but perhaps our student board member, Micah, might be able to poll some of his peers at school and ask them what they think about dress, being allowed to dress up for Halloween. Maybe it's something we could entertain down the road. But I wanted to do that for my boys because they've been bugging me about it. So please consider that board down the line.
Mr. Montes, I just have to interject real quickly. That's a cute idea till you have them show up dressed as flashers.
Well, we'd have to obviously set some limitations, right?
Which we did.
And so with that, again, happy holidays to everyone, and thank you very much, and congratulations again, Miss Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Montes.
You deserve it. And thank you, Mr. Islam, for all your leadership, and congratulations yourself, too.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Board Member Ayala, Vice President Ayala.
Well, sure. Thank you, President Gilbert. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you on your presidency. I, too, agree with Mr. Montes. I know you'll do a great job for the children of our district, the staff, and we still have a good board here. We all play different roles, and it's kind of like an octopus, you know? It has all those arms moving in all kinds of directions, and we divide up our times and we do our best to make sure that we're there for events and we're doing the right thing for our kids and our parents and our staff. Just a few words for the holidays that are coming up. Be careful when you're driving, especially those right turns. You have pedestrians, a lot, many times, they're children. We're in a hurry. You don't think, you just see the light. We did have a fatality at one of our local school districts. I won't bring it up. You seen the flowers out there, child was taken out, and it saddened me, you know? So I wanted to bring this up. It didn't happen in Rialto, but not too far away. And please be careful. And not only with driving, I know a lot of us, we get these ideas, especially the men, we'll try something new, and you jump into the turkey fryers, and you, no pun intended there, but you start getting excited. All it takes is just a little oil to bubble over, and it hits that flame, and you can't put it out. So if you are going to do it, watch the videos, use care, be careful. This is an opportunity to spend time with our loved ones, our family, our friends. It's a great time of the year. I will end by saying that sometimes we hear things that maybe we don't agree with, but it's important that we do come together, we learn from each other. And as we speak, I got to give Mohammed some credit. He put together a, an advisory committee, steering committee, to help us with the LCFF, and it's composed of all community members. This is a prime example of participatory management. And it may take a little longer to reach a consensus, but we do it together. So thank you for attending, and thank you for the opportunity to serve on this board.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, President Gilbert. To my fellow colleagues and our youngest leader in the district, best wishes from my house to your house and to the community, especially our staff. Just thank you for a great year. We're going to continue to work hopefully together. This board is working together. We do have different styles. We don't always come to the same conclusions, nor do we reach that, taking the same avenue or pathway. But it is good. It's always good to debate. It's always good to have different ideas. Leadership-wise, I prefer when I hear the other side of an argument, because ask my wife, I'm not always right. And it's one of those things where I thank my colleagues for pointing out the other side. I thank our community for pointing out their views on the other side. For those who can't attend, I thank them for contacting the board and voicing their opinion as well. Miss Gilbert, thank you for taking on the job of president again.
Thank you.
No one realizes more than somebody who's been there that it is a challenging calendar. It is a brutal schedule, and if any of us can be of help, I offer myself and my calendar to you.
Thank you.
So thank you, fellow board members. Best of the holidays and have a safe holiday, a safe New Years. We'll see you next year.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez, and fellow board members. I'm sitting here as your board president again, and as Mr. Martinez said, this is not an easy job. It is a challenging and demanding job. I will do my best to serve. I have worked with three superintendents since my, since I've been on the board here in Rialto. We're going through a crisis right now, but we've been through challenging times in the past, and Rialto still comes out on top. I see people that I've known for the past 13 years who are still here doing their best to make sure that we maintain high-quality standards and do the right thing here in Rialto. And that's what I plan to do. I want to be fair. I think I've been fair and honest in the past. I listen. I'm not quick to make judgment because sometimes we can't base our judgments on emotions. I look for the facts because that's the way decisions are made. We all have our own opinion, but when it comes down to it, we have to base our decisions on facts. And as we go through this challenging time right now, we're still gathering facts. As I mentioned at last board meeting, we are here to make sure we make the right decision. And we won't make a decision until we have gathered all the facts and we come together as a board to make a decision that will be the best for this district, because that's the way I feel and I know that each board member sitting here feel the same way. We seek counsel. When we don't know how to make a decision, we get advice from those who can help us make the right decision. So I know it's been a long process since the problems that have encroached upon us in our district, but believe me, we're working behind the scenes because when we make a decision, it will be the right decision, and it will be a decision that the board has agreed upon, because that's what we do. We're not individual people. We're here as a board. There are five people here, and we have to work together to make a sound decision that is best for everyone. And I want to thank each board member for the comments that they gave about me because I appreciate it, because I do feel deeply about this district. I've spent the last, going on 13 years here as a board member, and as Mr. Martinez said, this is not an easy job. It's not a paid job. So you know, if you do it, you must do it for a good reason. And education has always been a, been my goal in life. I've always wanted to do something in the field of education. When I retired from teaching, I just kept on because that's what I want to do. And I appreciate the young people who are sitting on the front row tonight. They are here and you're teaching, and thank you, parents, for bringing them out, because this is where it starts, when they learn that, how to speak and make their voice heard. So I appreciate them tonight. And I know it's almost time to go to bed, but you're here still smiling and alert, so I thank you for that. A few other things, I just want to wish everyone happy holidays. I know there's a Rialto City Parade this coming weekend. I know our bands and some of the club groups and some of you other children will be in the parade. Have fun, see Santa Claus, and just be good for that. But you still have two more days to go before your holiday break. And so with that, if there aren't any more things to say in this meeting, could I get a motion to adjourn, and then we will move into the second portion of this meeting?
Preferential vote.
Preferential vote by our student board member. Thank you, Mr. Montes.
Aye.
Aye. Would you move, I want you to make a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn the meeting?
All right.
A second?
Okay. All in favor now? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is adjourned. I don't know, what happened to the gavel? Where's the president's? Oh, I didn't even see. Meeting is adjourned. This portion.
For the organization of the School Facilities Corporation.
I second that we keep the same roster.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Time?
Nine oh one.